Good evening. I call the order of this council meeting of October the 7th. Thank you for being in attendance. Madam Clark, would you please read the roll call?
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
There.
And Mr. West. Seven council members present, one absent.
Thank you. If you'd rise with me. Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us this evening and he'll lead us in the invitation. Thank you Pastor.
Praise be sir. Heavenly Father, we want to keep first things first and tonight we pause for just a moment to offer a moment of silence and tribute to our neighbors that were affected so by the trauma in Las Vegas nine days ago. We pray for the families that are bereaved and for those that are deceased and hundreds who are still injured, many of them critically. We remember them. And last evening on Texas Tech campus, one of the Texas Tech police officers was killed in the line of duty. We offer a moment of silence for these folks and for the grief that their families' loved Lord, we have so much for which to be thankful to live in the community that we live and work and serve together to prosper and to move forward as your people. I want to give you thanks for that blessing for all of us who are part of this wonderful community. I continue to pray for but not explicitly for those I mention by name but for everyone that's tied to the city family who would need your care and maintenance. I would include in this prayer Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, Mr. Moore, Mr. Shyland, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, and any and all others that are a part or are connected to the city family. In addition, for those that I didn't mention by name because I didn't have a name, I pray equally for your blessings, love, and strength to be with them. I lift up, Lord, those who faithfully serve this city at every level, from our administrators and department heads, our mayor and council persons, and all those who serve on commissions and boards serving this larger community and its work. I thank you, Lord, for them and in this session tonight, for the larger community of citizens that are here to participate and share in this session. I pray that the works done here, the discussions that are held, and any decisions that are made, Lord, they be pleasing unto you. All of us agree upon this and pray together in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor, appreciate you being with us again. At the beginning of every council meeting, we've set its time aside for those who have concerns within the city that they'd like to share with the council to do that. We just ask that you limit your comments to no longer than five minutes and give us your name and your address. And that, so anyway, this is a time that's set aside for those who are not already on the council agenda. So at this time, I'll invite anyone to come forward who would like to visit with the city council over an item within the city and they have a concern over. Please, just come forward. Thank you.
Mayor Benton and members of the city council, my name is Judy McKinnon and I live at 1765 Ashley Court. I'm here to speak about the ordinance that you are considering to regulate tiny houses. I am opposed to setting minimum size requirements for dwellings for the following reasons. First, I believe the construction quality of a house is far more important than its size. We all have different perceptions of what we find pleasing to look at, but a building that is well constructed will serve its purpose for many years and require little maintenance. I believe the city should concern itself more with construction standards rather than dwelling size so that citizens may be assured of purchasing quality homes. Second, houses that cover a smaller percentage of the lot that they stand on leave more permeable surface and contribute less to problems with stormwater runoff. This causes less problems for the city and the community. Third, many people in our community live alone and they do not need large houses. They should have other options available. Fourth, housing is expensive. Tiny houses are one form of affordable housing. Finally, tiny houses use less natural resources to build and less energy to heat and cool. With over seven billion people on the earth, we should all be concerned with minimizing the impact we have on God's creation. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to express their concern with the council? Good evening.
Good evening all. Thank you for a few minutes of your time. My name is Stephanie Shepherd and I live at 732 Brookside Drive. I have an issue with the parking situation in front of the ambulance district on highway, at Highway F and Hickman. And I sent an email to my ward's men and although I've not received an email back that I'm aware of, I believe Ms. Croson has told me that it has been looked at by the council and so I just want to encourage you to pass some sort of ordinance that would permit parking only on one side of the street there. They have like eight to 10 parking spots behind the ambulance district that at times are not being utilized to their fullest potential. So I feel like once those are full, there should be adequate room to park on one side of the street. And I don't know if there's coordination with Westminster or if they disagree with our ability to use their parking lot right beside their softball field when the ballgame is not going on. I can't see where it would be a problem, you know, in the evening is when people are usually parked at the ambulance district. So I don't see where, and we're getting out of that season anyway, so I don't see where that would be a problem with utilizing that. And I know the season will come back around. But I feel like there are some others, you know, a few other solutions which I addressed in my email. And I just wanted to come forth and let you guys know that I'm very concerned about the situation. The particular evening that, the situation is always, I'm always aware of the situation because I live down there. But in the particular evening that was a real problem was when McIntyre Elementary had an event going on and then everyone was releasing from that event and coming up to Highway F. And then people were trying to go into Hickman, down Hickman. And literally were meeting head on in that area. And I do want, also want to commend, I had called the police department that evening when this was all going on. And an officer went right over and he discussed it, he informed me that he went right over and he discussed it with the ambulance powers that be over there. And I do want to say that ever since my complaint had been made and had been addressed by the police department, they have only been parking on one side of the street and that has been very, very helpful. But I would like to see the council take that extra step to actually put the signage on the street and pass the ordinance to require that so that people who are not familiar with the request, since it's pretty fresh in the future, will also abide by that rule. Because it is a safety hazard because the road is an S curve. And when you line cars on both sides of the S curve, you absolutely have no visibility as to what is coming in your direction. So I address all that in my email. I don't know if you all read it out loud at the last council meeting, so I may be just reverberating things you've already heard, but I just wanted to encourage the council to address it in ordinance form and make it permanent.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you Ms. Shepherd. Council does not interact if they may take it up later in the meeting at this point.
I understand.
But we appreciate your comment.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett.
Evening.
Dave Chris.
My name's Chris Garrett. My address is 1009 West Avenue. I'd like to just start by thanking you guys, the mayor, the city administrator, all the council members for the opportunity to come before you tonight. I'm a concerned citizen that would like to raise a few concerns for the council members to deliberate on before they consider passing Resolution 3292, the memorandum of understanding with the YMCA. My first concern is why are we committing potentially $300,000 to $750,000 in operating costs over 10 to 15 year period with no assurance of allowing the taxpayers to utilize the pool without a fee structure to go with the memorandum? My second concern is what's the definition of a capital gift? How much money is that? Are those funds coming from the half cent sales tax? And if so, is that legal? My third concern, and the memorandum states, it will be reviewed regularly to consider updates, enhancements, and potential, and this is the key phrase here for me, increases in contributions to the overall project. How much does that cost? To what end for non-for-profit entities do we donate? What precedent are we setting? I believe the citizens of Fulton, including myself, spoke loud and clear on April 5th, 2016, all 792 of us with a yes vote for a half cent sales tax. We were looking for stormwater repair improvements and also in the park and recreation department, which potentially included but not limited to Five Field Baseball Complex, a community center, and an outdoor aquatic center. If your constituents have spoken, why are we entering into this agreement tonight? Please consider these concerns and thank you for your time.
Thank you sir.
Thank you Chris. Appreciate your comment. Yes sir.
My name's Darren Zurich, 5054 Pennegress Road. And I just wanted to address everybody that prior to going into agreement with the YMCA, shouldn't we consider that Holt Summit, New Bloomfield, Havos, Kingdom City, all these other small towns are also going there? Are they giving money to the same deal? Is the county giving money out to the seal? How many grants have they applied for? You know, we fought for the sales tax to do what we said we were going to do, which included an outdoor pool. I just left the football complex a little while ago to be here. I had 15 different people talking to me about this, wanting an outdoor pool, not just an indoor. You can't sunbathe in an indoor pool. We need outdoor pool too. There's no need to shut ours down. We need to keep ours open and build what we said we were going to build when we passed this tax. So before the council goes and forks out money to the YMCA, which is a private entity, this is Callaway County YMCA, not Fulton YMCA. So there should be a lot more involvement from other communities if that happens. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Thank you. Appreciate the input from everyone and if the council will consider your comments, like I say, later in the meeting and our, at least at next meeting. At this point, I need a change in, addendum to the agenda and under new business would be add an item B, which would be a discussion on the April 4 election, adding items to that. If I could have a motion to approve that.
Move to approve the addition to the agenda.
Second. Excuse me. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion second to amend the agenda to include discussion on April 4 election items. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll now move on to approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is just an agenda which allows us to approve a number of items that are more or less housekeeping in nature. And again, those items on that consent agenda is, include a glow run, approval of a glow run for the YMCA on October the 27th, the approval of the annual Christmas parade, which is on December the 2nd by the JCs or sponsored by the JCs. And that concludes.
Motion to approve of consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in the second to approve of the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion? Signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. Take care of that. If you do not have any unfinished business, we do have, we'll move on to new business and we have before you a proposal by the YMCA. And I believe we have some folks with the Y here with us tonight and if you'd like to all come forward and present your discussion.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I know last year, we came before the council to speak with regards to plans for our upcoming and current campaign in progress. And I know that for us, we started with the memorandum of understanding because to be able to start that conversation in earnest, we felt that we needed more in place than just a few conversations here or there to share our plans. With me is Sarah McDaniel. She is our current director at the YMCA and I am the actual board president of our YMCA at the present time. And I know that, I believe, do they all have copies of the memorandum in front of them? Okay.
Yes.
I'm not going to speak to each point on here. I would say this, knowing that we're coming to the city, having the opportunity to develop a partnership would be beneficial to us in many ways, one of which would be applying for other grants and opportunities. They want to know that a community is tied together in their efforts to provide the best recreation opportunities for our community and that is in part why we are looking for a partnership. And I'll let Sarah speak specifically to a few of the other items related to the project.
Good evening. I know, you know, we've had several conversations with the mayor and Bill Johnson and select council members at times. And just a few things that I'll outline, you know, one of the first conversations that really came about when it came to a partnership with the city and the pool was between myself and a councilman and we were just trying to think of a way, you know, how can the Y and the city work together to bring an indoor aquatic center to Fulton? You know, when you look on surveys that Parks and Rec has done, when you look on surveys that the Y has done, indoor aquatic center is always one of the top items. And we feel like the plans that we have put forward really, excuse me, really address that. And so, in the meetings that we had, it had, you know, the discussion had been had that A-Strike Pool would be closed and then we would assume the aquatic portion of all programming and recreational swim. We have not gotten in depth with any sort of programming or scheduling just because, you know, right now we're focusing on our fundraising and we don't feel like we're to that point. But that's the first bullet point. The amounts that are stated on that solely come from, you know, what we feel are going to help us offset some of our operational costs. The very initial conversation was around $50,000 a year that the city could potentially contribute, so we put that number in there. We've done a lot of research with YMCA of the USA and also some other Ys in Missouri that have recently renovated their building, expanded their building to include a pool and have used some of those numbers and feel like, you know, the range of 30, 30 to 50 would help offset some of our costs associated with the pool. And again, the 10 to 15 years worth of support comes from an initial conversation. You know, we feel like the structure that we have designed, that we have planned to build will last for many, many years and, you know, the 10-year number was again, part of that initial conversation that we had. But if we are able to take the, you know, if we assume all of the aquatic programming, all of the recreational swim, 15 years could be substantial. And really, the last conversation that we had was where we added the subject to annual council approval. And at our board meeting last night, we had a lot of conversations that we probably should add subject to YMCA board approval because just like the council, our board turns over every year also. We are working on our capital campaign, as Connie mentioned. We recently were awarded nap credits through the state of Missouri. We are just, I guess, probably met with three local businesses and individuals that will support us through those and we feel like that's a great momentum. Will build a lot of momentum for us to start our project. But we have a list of 265 individuals that will receive a packet over the next six to eight months. And so we are, you know, definitely not just focusing on one area for our fundraising. It's definitely a community project. And as far as grants and other opportunities, we have a list of, I think about eight to 10 other grant opportunities, USDA, April Green Foundation, some other local foundations, the Mayby Foundation out of Oklahoma. So we are definitely looking outside of the community to raise the funds that are needed
Just a couple of other things. And I don't think that it's ever our intention to deplete the sales tax that the taxpayers pass. That's not our intention. But as we all know, building structures and facilities takes a lot of time and certainly more money than most of us can pile together to make that happen in a short period of time. Our goal was to work with the city honestly so that we could provide a space that would meet the needs of our community. You know, I also have many different members who happen to need physical therapy in the water or water therapy and they can't get that here. So they have to drive to Columbia or Jeff City just to meet those needs where the hotels used to provide it, they no longer do because of the liabilities associated with that. Our goal is to meet our community's needs and if we can have an opportunity for us to go into an understanding with one another that we want to partner in this situation, we feel that it will benefit the program that is available in our community and wouldn't have to drive elsewhere to accomplish that, so.
Any questions?
I have a comment. I had a phone call at 10 o'clock this morning, very opposed to the city getting involved with y'all. That you have come before the council two other times and you didn't want to work with the council, you wanted to be an individual entity. Therefore, I'm not going to agree with what you want.
Okay. I can tell you that that was under different leadership and a different board. I don't think that those members on the board, we may have two people still that are on the board that may have been in that decision-making years ago, but that is not our current makeup.
Anyone else?
Connie, with the passage of the new half cent sales tax, our park board has a whole new strategic plan. Have you guys been working with the park board? Have you been having conversations? Has this been, is your board incorporated with the park board right now with a strategic plan of what we're doing moving forward?
Well, in our previous conversations with Mayor Benton and City Administrator Johnson, we have had conversations only through their planning process of what they're, where they're at in their stages. We have not met with the other board, the parks board, but I know Clay has been involved in our conversations as well when we've met. He's been at those meetings.
And then, I guess one of the comments that was made during, you know, the open comment time was, and I know this gets further into the weeds and all of that, but it's still questions people have now, is what, how would you perceive the usage? You know, where five years from now, the pools been built, the city is assisting with the operations, what is that citizen going to get? What are they going to see in terms of a taxpayer citizen of the city for the YMCA?
Well, the vision we shared in a previous discussion with the council would be that we would have swim times that would be open to the public, just as the current school or the structure is, there's a fee for entrance into the pool as it currently is out at the high school. And we would foresee that that would be necessary for us to pay for the support of lifeguards and so on and so forth. But it would be open, we had actually outlined and we can provide that information directly to you, where it would be open opportunities for the public to swim. In an ideal situation, truly, and I know that we were provided with the budget that the city had indicating the loss of roughly $30,000 over, what, a three-month period is the pool open roughly? And our thought is, when that situation, that has lost money that is currently right now because of the loss of water and maintaining the pool, that is what their deficit is for running the pool. We would like to propose an indoor/outdoor type of setting where we have an open air structure that would allow us to have a 12-month year around, for the year, but in the summer months to make it more outdoor-related than indoor.
And are there, Sarah, you mentioned talking to other communities and other YMCA's. Do we have examples where similar cities, similar communities? What's the precedent for a city assisting with YMCA nonprofit operation?
There's a lot of city and Y partnerships in the state of Missouri. The one that we, that I probably compare the most with is Louisiana, Missouri. They recently have built a six-lane indoor pool and they partner with the city on the management of that pool, but then they also manage the outdoor pool, the three months that it's open in the summer. But Louisiana, Missouri, the Twin Pike Family Y, and then also in Bolivar, Missouri, there's a partnership between the YMCA, which is part of the Springfield, the Springfield Ys, but they have a partnership with an aquatic center in Bolivar also.
And who operates, in Louisiana, who operates?
The Y.
The Y operates it?
The Y does.
And it's as similar to this MOU recommendation is that it's simply a check written from the city?
And I don't know what their terms are, what their fee structure is, but there's an assigned agreement between the city and the Y on the operations portion of it, yes.
Well, my thought is when the citizens approved this tax on the election, it was for the city, it was not for the Y. And I think we would be dishonest with our citizens if we take their money and put it into the Y and not where it was originally intended to go.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this tone, we'll go to the April 4 election items of which we kind of discussed in the work session. And again, just to highlight that one was if, to take to the citizens a proposal that if there was not contested elections within a ward, that we would not necessarily have that item listed, we would not have that election. Do I hear any proposal on that particular item?
I propose that we have a draft of an ordinance brought to the city council at the next meeting. I guess it would be two separate ordinances.
Yes.
The first ordinance about the uncontested elections and whether or not we
The, the first ordinance about the uncontested elections and whether or not we needed to place that position on the ballot. And then a second ordinance outlining the use tax item placed on the, the April ballot.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion, second, that administration prepare an ordinance that changes the way that we do our election process when there's not contested elections, and also to, to have a use tax for consideration on the April fourth election. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll now move on to council concerns. This is the time that you may bring forward any item that is not already on, on the agenda, that, that you would like to discuss or carry, get additional clarification on. So if we could, I'll just start with Mr. Shiverdick.
I'm good for the seat.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
The only thing I have is to our constituents, Rick and I, we did turn it over because we had a meeting the following night. So traffic control, that'd be brought up for your rest of your concerns on Brookside at the next traffic commission meeting. So I did turn it over.
To piggyback on that, it was brought up before the ambulance board last night, that they would do, the members and trainees that come to the facilities would do everything possible to park on one side. It is, it is challenging when we have thirty trainees coming in for an evening that require training, and we also have crews that are there. And if you look in the back, there might be a couple of empty spots, but it's usually so that when shift change occurs, that crew member has a place to park. So, it, it's not always that they're choosing to park out front. But I know that it is being, Councilman Moore's bringing, taking this to traffic, there are some challenges with creating a parking only on one side because then it greatly limits what Westminster's able to do during their events. And we have to consider that entire stretch. But it was taken to the ambulance leadership as well as the crews in the board last night. You were hurt. Yep, they responded immediately.
And I can let you know, I live on that street too.
He sure does. Yeah, he's, he does.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, he does.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Gray?
Yes, I'd like to bring up this smart grid thing. I think it was maybe a month or two ago, it was mentioned here, and there was kind of a sigh as if the whole thing was not working. And since I wasn't familiar with it, I got on the internet, and I was reading dollar amounts, which is atrocious. And we still don't have all of the meters installed. It's still not working. What is this costing the citizens of Fulton trying to get this thing operable? How much longer is it going to be?
We can bring you a report on that at the next meeting.
Okay. Because when I read a figure of...
Anyone prepared for that, Susan?
Million, you know, I mean, three million, come on.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me. Wasn't our review, we gave y'all at the end of the year, I believe, in our last discussion on this, that we were supposed to get a report?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, I'm not catching...
I said, I thought our last meeting, we had this discussion about that long one, that our vote was to give you a report by end of the year.
Yes.
Yeah, so I was going to say, unless you want to do it earlier, but I see...
Very good. Yeah, we'll keep you updated. It's, it's a continual thing that kind of ebbs and flows. And...
Well, can you explain why all of the meters haven't been installed yet?
Well, number one, we, we wanted to make sure that we had viable system before we moved on to install or purchasing all the meters that are required. And so, we're taking stages.
In this thing, it says we already bought over five thousand of the smart meters, and only a portion of them have been installed.
No, well, depends on what system you're talking about. You remember, we have, you have water and gas and also...
And electric.
Okay, and electric. So all, all of your electric has been installed, to my, to my knowledge. Is that correct, Mr. Dunlap? If you want to address that a minute. I know you're not, give us your best at this point.
But it's my understanding, the water meters are yet to be installed? Is that correct?
All the electric meters are installed, and we put in some water meters and some gas meters. And we're making sure Kathy can get those through billing before we buy any more of them. That's, the electric went through billing, now she's getting water and gas through. And we're making sure the system's stable.
So is this costing us more because of a delay in getting all of them installed and getting all of them purchased? I mean, I guess what I'm wanting to know, what is this costing the citizens of Fulton that this thing isn't working yet?
We still have meter readers.
I understand that.
And that's, that's what it's costing you right now, that we weren't anticipating. We was hoping to be rid of the meter readers by now and have them in other jobs, in other trains.
And I guess what I'm asking you is, you still have people on foot out there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in addition to what we've already paid?
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't have a deadline on, because you got to make sure all the nuts and bolts are working right?
Well, I, I believe the council set the deadline for the end of the year for us to either say it's going to be viable or not. And that's, that's what we're working toward.
I'm just concerned about how much money is going out, and nobody's getting anything to show for all this money we've invested.
At this current time, there's not a lot of additional money going out, and we're refraining from spending any additional funds until we can prove and document that the money that we have spent on the water and gas, electric side's working pretty good. But we don't want, but we don't want to spend any more money on the water and gas side until we know that it's going to work.
But I guess what I'm asking of, what have you spent in addition to what originally was allowed, assigned?
You haven't spent anything that wasn't budgeted to spend.
Anything that wasn't anticipated.
All right. As long as it's not costing everybody...
And then, I guess it's actually, we spent less than was anticipated because we have delayed the water and gas deployment?
Just as long as it's not costing the citizens of Fulton in addition. That's my concern.
Sure. And I think that's all of our concerns, it's one of the reasons we continue to talk about it. But yes, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep you updated on that. Councilman Stone?
Nothing specific. I think we have a few more discussion items when we get to resolution thirty-two ninety-two, but nothing else.
Okay.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Nothing.
Thank you.
Good.
Very, very good. Thank you for those comments. We'll now move on to resolutions, and our first resolution is resolution number thirty-two ninety-two that has, is a resolution that has to do with a memorandum of understanding with the YMCA. Councilman Chyland, would you please present resolution number thirty-two ninety-two for consideration?
A resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the YMCA of Calway County, Missouri regarding the proposal for an indoor aquatic facility. We sign all the documents necessary in relation to said memorandum and understanding and establish an effective date. I move the resolution thirty-two ninety-two be voted on at tonight's meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a second to that res, to that motion?
I second it.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion, second, to adopt thirty-two ninety-two at tonight's meeting. It's now open for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I've, I've been hearing, I mean, we've had a lot of back and forth stuff and, and this and that. One thing that bothers me a little bit is, I'm surprised we haven't had a recommendation from our park board, which is involved in the swimming pool and that. And I think, I really think we should have a recommendation from them before we pass this forward.
That's also my significant item of discussion, is I believe that this, this needs to go before the park board, let them review it as part of their strategic plan, and make sure that we're, that the entire community is moving forward in the same direction.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I suggest we table this, till we get more information.
Second. Very good.
We have a motion and a second to table.
Table will take precedent. So, all those in favor of tabling resolution number thirty-two ninety-two, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Okay, so we'll, we'll send it to the park board for their recommendation. When we get that back, we'll bring it to you. Okay, thank you. We'll now consider resolution number thirty-two ninety-three, which is a resolution for an agreement between Local twenty-nine forty-five of the firefighter union and the city of Fulton. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present resolution number thirty-two ninety-three?
Resolution thirty-two ninety-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to enter, to enter into an agreement with Local twenty-nine forty-five International Association of Firefighters and establish an effective date.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second on that?
We don't have a motion.
I'm sorry?
We don't have a motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make, I make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-two ninety-three at this council meeting.
Second. Okay, very good. I have a motion and a second to adopt thirty-two ninety-three. Let me ask Michelle if you'd come forward and, and visit with us about this, and then we'll have some discussion and so forth.
Good evening.
So, both sides of the negotiation teams came together several times in good faith, had very good discussions about this contract. Guesstimated about two hundred hours of time was spent on this contract. Both sides gave way. We had great discussions. However, there are two items in this contract that are troublesome for the city. Therefore, I would recommend declining the contract at this time. The first item, under Article Five for Discipline, in the last sentence just above the discovery phase, it says, "No member of the bargaining unit will be terminated without just cause." Just cause is a legal term that makes it extremely difficult for employer to discipline or terminate an employee and could cause great legal harm in court if it should ever go that far. The second item is under benefits, under Article Twenty. Basically, it gives a greater benefit to those in the union than other employees in the city. Does anyone have any questions about those items or anything else?
Michelle, in your opinion, how does the, the term following just cause, how does it differ from the, our, our other city employees' corrective action and discipline policies?
Well, it essentially strips managerial rights. Of course, we'd like to think we always have just cause, but just cause is also subjective. Some of the wording, some of the legal wording associated with just cause is subjective. And so, you know, of course, we always document everything that we do. We generally seek legal opinion before we terminate an employee. We try to make sure we do everything as, as justifiably as we can. But if an employee feels they were terminated incorrectly, or for other reasons other than the reason why they were terminated, they could sue us. And because we didn't do it according to a subjective list, it could hurt us in...
Though we have a corrective action, discipline, termination policy for cities...
We do, and we have grievance procedures and, yes.
And is there, from your memory, is there, is there reasons why they wanted the language different in this agreement than what we currently have in our, our city policies? You don't have to answer that if you don't recall, but...
I, I do not recall the reason. I apologize.
And then for the pay and benefits, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't able to look at it this afternoon. What is, what is the difference between the proposal and the agreement and other city employee benefits for the PTO versus the extended sick leave?
So, city of Fulton employees, if we have a family member that's out sick or just had a baby, we would have to exhaust PTO before we could use our sick leave bank. Remember, PTO encompasses both sick and vacation, okay? The wording in the contract says that the employee would have to use forty-eight hours of PTO and then use sick. So basically, going to it almost immediately. So that's a much better benefit than the other employees.
And all the other city employees have to exhaust their PTO bank before going to the extended sick leave.
Right, right. Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you, Michelle. My explanation. Any other further discussion on this motion?
I believe it needs to be noted that I have to decline due to conflict of interest having a family member employed by the fire department. So...
Very good.
According to that, still later, this was a quorum session with Councilman West out.
Are you okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I hate to be devil's advocate, but it doesn't benefit her financially what the charter says, isn't it? It does not prevent Mrs. Gray financially, so I don't see where she has to decline.
My instructions were from the state that I have to decline.
Okay, good.
This was all checked out before this ever came up.
Okay.
Take a, instruct a, a training that we had several months ago, well, over a year ago, that if, if a council person has any conflict of interest on any particular subject...
Or proceed.
Yeah, or proceed, yeah. They can't really even discuss it, so they shouldn't be part of it. So make sure that we're really legal here, Ms. Gray. If you don't mind, if you would go back to the room over there behind Keith Meyer for why we make this vote, and we'll make sure that, that, that you're protected there and that you did excuse yourselves.
Mayor, I think I probably should also step aside from both of those.
Okay.
I, I have a strong union background, and my vote probably would be prejudiced to the vote.
Whatever you're comfortable with, if you're going. Thank you. Okay, one, two, three, four, five. So that leaves us five.
Mr. Mayor, just a question of process, because I haven't been through this before. If we, if we decline this resolution at this time, is there still plenty of time and opportunity for an agreement to be met before?
Oh, yes.
Anything expires?
There's no timeline. We currently do not have a contract. And so, this would, this is established in the contract.
Okay.
Negotiations will continue then. Okay. Very good. With that, all those in favor of adopting resolution thirty-two ninety- With that, all those in favor of adopting resolution thirty-two ninety-three, please signify as saying yes. All those opposed, no?
No.
Okay, very good. The noes have it. Thirty-two ninety-three is declined. Thank you. J.C., would you please invite the council people back? Thank you. That resolution again was declined for those of you who had to leave the room. We'll now consider resolution number thirty-two ninety-four, which is a resolution that approves an additional change to a contract between Burns and McDonald and the city for additional services concerning the Rattle lift station. Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present thirty-two ninety-four for consideration tonight for the meeting?
Yes. Resolution number thirty-two and ninety-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with Burns and McDonald, McDonald from task order three regarding the Rattle lift station improvement projects with the cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and to sign all other necessary documents in relation to said agreement and task order. I make a motion to adopt resolution number thirty-two ninety-four at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number thirty-two ninety-four at tonight's meeting. Any further discussion of that motion? Mr. Brimmer, do you have anything you'd like to add here? Or is this, I'm sorry, this is Darrell again.
This is the lift station, I think the narrative it said, this gave us a lot of problems in the past. It's basically wore out. We took this to the utility board, they recommended to the council to accept it. It's basically the preliminary design and then we can choose from that point whether we want to do a design build or we want to do a traditional bid package. So it's getting us to that decision point to make.
So this only encompasses the design?
That's the preliminary design cost, yes.
And is that normal and customary for something, for projects in this time?
Yes.
Thank you, Darrell.
Any other questions? Thank you, Darrell. Any further discussion on resolution thirty-two ninety-four? Hearing done, all those in favor of resli, accepting resolution thirty-two ninety-four, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Yes is habit, thank you. That stands approved. Okay, that concludes our resolutions for this evening. We'll now move on to ordinances. First reading ordinance has to do with adopting an official budget for the city of Fulton for the year beginning twenty eighteen through December thirty-one, twenty eighteen. Councilman Schibberdecker, would you please present bill number fourteen eighty-one for first reading?
Yes, sir.
Title only.
Bill number fourteen eighty-one, ordinance adopting an official budget and capital improvement program and appropriating the funds of the city for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and eighteen and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. I make a motion that we advance bill number fourteen eighty-one for a second reading at our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Again, I'll mention before we go much further, thank you for motion and second. This bill again is our official budget. This is first reading only. We will have a public hearing at our next council meeting at the end, at the last Tuesday of this month. So anyone in the, in the, any citizen who'd like to comment on the budget, please come to that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion of bill number fourteen eighty-one, I know that Kathy and Michelle have been coordinating on this. Would you all like to come up and give us the whys and the wherefore?
I can just touch on a few highlights that are in the budget this year. We have earmarked six hundred thousand dollars for the Rattle lift station rebuild. Those monies will be transferred from the capital improvement sales tax. They are restricted funds that are earmarked for capital water and sewer improvements. So that's a perfect project for that. We'll be starting the Fourth Street project. It's listed as a capital expense of six hundred and forty thousand dollars. The funding will come from several different sources. There is a grant, I believe, in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand dollars. We are dedicating some asphalt, money that would have been spent on asphalt overlay in two thousand and eighteen and a portion of the stormwater sales tax to that project. It'll be all new curb and gutters down Fourth Street, really improve the entranceway into town. And then there is the fifty-four project, Business Fifty-four project from the roundabout to Avedell Press. And those monies are from the two thousand and seventeen asphalt overlay. They were earmarked for that and there'd be new curb and gutter. And then we will be, I think we added two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget to take the utilities underground from St. Louis Avenue North, I believe. Isn't that about right? And we've also discussed a fleet management program. Couple months ago, Enterprise came to talk to us and made a presentation. And so we brainstormed and thought, why should we pay those guys to do that? We can probably do this ourselves. So the idea is that we would keep vehicles for four or five years when we could still get a good return on them. Most of our vehicles are purchased at state bid, so, you know, that way we could modernize our fleet. And it will take several years to, to get there, but we think it's a very workable plan. Does anybody have any questions?
And for the fleet, thinking it's going to take two hundred and fifty thousand initial investment to get this started or?
If you look at the sheet, it's actually a little over four hundred thousand for the first year.
Okay.
And then if you kind of look at this, this sheet, some of the vehicles were not trading or would then move, like vehicles listed here as number thirty-four. They replaced with, maybe this one moves to fit, this golf would get this one, so currently two thousand and nine, that's going to replace nineteen ninety-eight. So these would go to surplus.
Two fifty is our general fund portion.
That's just one of the numbers that stuck out.
Not to speak for J.C., but, you know, he was, he said, you know, if we only have a vehicle four or five years, the maintenance and service costs are going to be drastically reduced on them and bring them out. Darrell took one truck to a couple of dealers and found that a four-year-old truck had a very good resale, good trade-in value, that we'd be able to replace it for between three and four thousand.
And most of our vehicles are low mileage, which is another plus.
And the one, the one.
It takes a large initial outlay to get you started, especially when you've got a fleet of this age.
And one of the dealers he went to didn't participate in the state, state bidding and was actually, again, not to speak for him, but appeared quite surprised that we were able to buy a vehicle that cheap. Which, so our initial cost is lower, meaning that the, in two years, we'll still get a good trade value compared to what they were able to buy it for.
Makes sense.
Then just a, a general question, Kathy and both Michelle, as I was reviewing some of the salary line items throughout the different departments.
I think Michelle's going to address that a little bit.
Okay.
She will address that shortly, if you don't have any other questions.
Just don't go too far.
Well, I'll just have one for you.
Stay close, stay close.
How are you going to off balance the garage?
I believe on the most recent financial. Yeah, I don't even want to go there. Less maintenance, less filling.
Just a little humor for you.
So, any more questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Nan.
Thank you, Ken.
There's the other girl.
I'm just saying that Kathy is the numbers lady. I just have the general proposal ideas. So the proposed raises for January first, two thousand and eighteen is three percent across the board, plus an additional twenty-five cent raise an hour for hourly employees on top of that.
Oh, what? Now repeat that again, what?
Three percent for all full-time employees.
Right.
Plus a quarter of an hour raise for hourly employees. Okay? In addition to that, the proposal includes a new starting rate of pay. Right now, our minimum starting rate is nine fifty an hour. We'd like to raise that to ten.
Wonder.
Raise firefighter pay from nine fifty to ten fifty. And raise police officers from thirteen forty-six to fourteen forty-two. In addition to that, after successfully completing a six-month probationary period, we would like to offer a ten percent raise instead of five percent. The reason why is because at that time, loggers kicks in and takes four percent. And so essentially, the person's paycheck does not change. In addition to that, some supervisors might have a great employee, but maybe they want that person to make a change. Like, let's say an employee is supposed to have their CDL by their six months, okay? So they have their CDL permit, but they haven't gone and gotten the CDL yet. So if that supervisor wants to give them, say, half the raise, two percent or two and a half percent, they feel stuck because they know that person's going to lose part of their pay. So they feel like they have to give them the full five percent to cover the loggers.
But that's the contribution into the return.
Right.
Of course.
And it's not uncommon.
Right. So that would raise our salaries up, but also give supervisors a little bit of leeway if they want the employee to improve on their performance, so to speak.
I think we're still in the process of trying to correct our low hourly employees and, and this is a way that we felt like we could make some, well, we made some big strides last year. I think we can make some big strides again this year. Any other questions from Michelle?
Your fire number? Your fire number?
What's her?
Fire department's number? I didn't catch it.
Oh, go from nine fifty to ten fifty an hour. So after six months, they go to eleven fifty-five.
Those additional numbers probably answer all of my salary questions. I, I couldn't find a, a common percentage increase across the different departments.
We couldn't either.
Okay. Like five point one, one point eight, four point two, it was all over the board and so I wasn't.
I see.
Well, if, if one, just, I'm not trying to say right or wrong, but if a person retires at a higher rate and we bring somebody in at a lower rate, we just.
That was the other question, was if we, if they sliced it that thin, you know, I saw where the, you know, the police department salaries actually dropped, even though I think they added a person. And I'm like, okay, well, Stan Holt retired, so we finally got somebody we could afford.
They had three retirements. They had three retirements this year.
You know, we were paying him so much that we, you know, we probably hired two people for him.
Right, well, yeah.
Yeah, I know, he wishes we paid him that much and he deserved it. Okay, and thank you.
Thank you.
Two for one.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion?
No.
If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of advancing bill number fourteen eighty-one, please signify as saying yes.
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 All those opposed, no? Okay, very good, thank you. Yes is habit, fourteen eighty-one advances for second reading. But I'll consider bill number fourteen eighty-two, which was tabled at the last meeting, which is, has to do with a zoning change to commonly referred to as tiny houses. And I, I recommend that this not be taken off, taken off the table and.
I make a motion to take.
I'm sorry.
To keep it tabled.
Keep it tabled. Keep it tabled, yeah.
Very good.
Until we get our recommendation.
Second.
Have it reviewed by the planning and zoning.
Right. Our intent is to take it to planning and zoning, so it may come back.
Let them look at it.
That will allow for additional city public input into, into this particular item and allow them to look at different ways of how to approach it.
When we discussed that, was it, they're going to be, weren't they going to publish for a public hearing?
Yes.
On the, on the time case, yeah.
To address our citizen directly, by leaving this on the table and moving it to the planning and zoning committee, their process requires a public hearing.
Meeting.
Meeting, public meeting on the issue of any changes to the planning and zoning. So it provides for more of a conversation.
And so that's, takes care of that one. We'll now consider bill number fourteen eighty-three, which was tabled at the last meeting also, which has to do with a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Department of Conservation, and I don't believe this, Natural Resources, I don't believe this is ready either.
Can we, I just talked to them.
Let's just leave it on the table.
Late last week. And they weren't, they weren't ready. Have you heard any updates, J.C.?
Let's just leave it there.
So, you know, I'm just, I don't want to make it sound bad, but, you know, working with the Department of Natural Resources and the Department of Conservation, maybe sometime next summer?
I was thinking twenty nineteen.
So just leave it on the table, huh?
Excuse me, I need to clarify something. I think I had a motion from Councilman Vaughn to leave it on the table and we don't really need a motion to do that.
I thought we had to bring it off the table and put it back on.
And didn't follow through on that, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
And it'd be the same way with this one, so we'll just leave it there and it'll die as natural death.
If you don't bring it off, it dies.
But, yeah, I don't think that, that project is dead, it's just that we have not received the paperwork from the state.
That's a good idea.
As soon as that comes in, we'll bring it back to you.
So I guess as a point of clarification, it would have a new bill number and all of that when it came back to us?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. So we, we're just going to allow it to, to fall off the agenda? And if, if and when they get presented, either of them will be brought back in the new bill number?
Correct.
Thank you.
According to our council procedures, again, if, if a bill's not taken off the table at the next meeting, it just goes away.
Then it can come back on different, yeah.
Now we'll consider bill number fourteen eighty-five, which is an ordinance that has to do with changing some traffic speed limits. And Councilman Stone, would you please present this for first reading? Title only.
Presenting bill number fourteen eighty-five, title only, an ordinance amending chapter one hundred and ten, traffic and vehicles, section one ten dash two four eight, speed limits, paragraph three of the code of the city of Fulton, Missouri. By lowering the speed limit on Christopher Lane, Addison Street and East First Street to twenty miles per hour and establishing an effective date, I move to present bill number fourteen eighty-five for first reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second to advance bill number fourteen eighty-five for second reading. Is there any further discussion of this motion?
Why are we changing these to twenty miles per hour?
I, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
The, Councilman.
There we go.
I will let Traffic Commission tell us more. Thank you.
We've had several complaints on both these roadways. Christopher Lane, Dead End Street, if you went thirty miles per hour on it, you feel like you're flying. It just kind of fits the, fits the needs of the road, I would say. I mean, it just, if you went thirty miles an hour, you feel like you were going sixty. And Addison and First Street is.
It's just a narrow little street.
It's a narrow little street for the most part and, you know, if you start on First Street, that's, it's near a park area, it also kind of curbs through there, so narrows, it narrows down as it, as it gets closer to Addison. it narrows down as it, as it gets closer to Addison. People like to cut through that area, too, during time off of, of work, state hospital and whatnot.
Exactly.
So, it's just, both of them, both, both those areas, if you're going thirty miles an hour, you feel like you're going too fast.
Right, makes sense.
That's the reason. Any questions?
Are we going from a thirty to a twenty just back, or is it going to gradually ease into a twenty?
Oh.
Just like that.
Yeah, it's got to be back.
Well, here, while, somebody complained coming down Martin Lixter King, it was like fifty, and then it dropped down to thirty, and he got a speeding ticket and he raised heck it, so we went from fifty to forty-five and we gradually went down.
There's not enough in there.
But, to me, Addison isn't big enough to even, I don't know. I mean, this twenty is fine with me.
A lot of complaints.
But I don't want to be doing thirty, thirty-five, and then all of a sudden I got, whee!
You've got to slow down.
If there's not any further questions, I'll call, discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of advancing Bill number fourteen eighty-five for second reading, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is habit, Bill number fourteen eighty-five will advance for second reading. We'll now move to second reading ordinances. Bill number fourteen eighty-four, as amended, is an ordinance that pertains to rates to be established for rural wastewater connection. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present Bill number fourteen eighty-four as amended for a second reading?
Bill number fourteen eighty-four, as amended, an ordinance repealing ordinance number fourteen thirty-two dash seventeen, enacting a new ordinance pertaining to a rural wastewater connection in its place and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill fourteen eighty-four for third reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Thank you. Very good. I have a motion and a second to advance Bill number fourteen eighty-four to third reading. Any further discussion of this motion?
Nope.
I just have a question. Is this man ever going to make his own lagoon? Is he going to continue to be hooked into us?
Yeah.
Should we annex him for taxation purposes?
No.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Very good. All those, any further discussion of fourteen eighty-four? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor advancing fourteen eighty-four, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, Bill number fourteen eighty-four will now, advances for third reading. Did you say to do it tonight, Richard?
No, I did not.
Okay. We'll do it next meeting. Thank you. Very good. I do not have a need for an executive section, session, excuse me. Announcements are listed there in your, in your agenda. Are there any ones that we need to bring out there, Madam Clerk?
I don't think so.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. We stand adjourned.